All right, it is 7:03. Let's call this meeting to order. Does everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance.
To the good and sacred states of America, and to the people of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sherman, if you'd like to lead us in the opening prayer.
Do I have anything to say? Yes.
Oh, okay. Mr. Smith?
Why do we come here tonight with asking you to guide us in helping the city get by the best we can get by and helping us make the best decisions that we can make? We ask in your son's name, amen.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Here.
Ms. Grant?
Here.
Ms. Watkins?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Happy birthday.
All right, has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes from the April 27, 2020 meeting?
First to third?
Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Let's see citizens' comments. Do we have anybody, anything?
My name is Melissa Perez Clement. I reside at 216 Fort Street, Nelsonville, Ohio. Per public records request sent to the Nelsonville City Manager with the inclusion of the Nelsonville City Council Clerk, my request for the written minutes of the regularly scheduled virtual council meeting dated April 13, 2020. During said meeting, my citizens' comments, which were submitted in compliance with all guidelines and rules, were not read in their entirety. The PDF file received did hold my entire statement, but for the virtual meeting, only a portion of my letter was read by the President of Council, Tony Dunphy, because of the openly stated objection made by Councilmember Dan Sherman. Those sistering comments made by Mr. Sherman were not included in the written minutes of the meeting. Given their importance and significance, I am hereby formally requesting the minutes of the Nelsonville City Council meeting dated April 13, 2020 to be amended, be amended, with the addition of Mr. Sherman's comments added. And also, I am hereby formally requesting this letter for citizens' comments in its entirety, including any and all comments made in regard to, also be added into the minutes of this meeting of May 11, 2020. Once the needed corrections are complete, please also consider this public records request for the corrected and revised written minutes for the Nelsonville City Council meeting of April 13, 2020. Your prompt attention will be appreciated. Melissa Perez Clement.
All right, do we have anything else? Scott, do we have anybody on the line?
Nothing at this time.
All right, let's go to business and organizational comments. Do we have any updates on anything? Ms. Johnson, something?
No, that's not, that's not committee report.
No, so committee, committee comments?
And then why that, okay. Any committee comments?
Well, we have to amend the agenda.
Let's amend the agenda to add committee discussions.
Do you want this back on first?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Are you moving?
Uh, moving.
Second.
Let's call it committee reports.
Committee reports.
Uh, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right.
So have any committees met since the last?
Any committees met now?
Okay, great, here, here. We had a utility committee meeting and we discussed numerous, numerous things. One of them is on the agenda, seventy-five hundred dollars to fix the three bad manholes, which that was the same amount of money the city employees could fix them for seventy-five hundred dollars that it would cost to fix one on Worthing Street. And one on Worthing Street absolutely has to be fixed before it gets any worse. So we discussed that. Uh, we also discussed some preliminary trash issues. And we decided that in the new contract, that we would write that the recycle bins had to be emptied twice a week.
The big ones.
The big ones would have to be emptied twice a week. And that that would be, that we would consider, barring that, we would consider a franchise fee to make sure that, to make sure that happened and there isn't, there wasn't a mess out there. Uh, I think we discussed some other issues that Scott has plans to do and we'll be meeting further on the trash and developing that contract so we can get it out for bid.
Did we discuss book to water meters?
We did and the, my understanding is the engineering firm was working on that. Uh, Michael Betts was working on the water meters for Bookto. And we also, yeah, we, the other thing that I should put in for people out in Facebook land, we, uh, we have an ordinance that would allow anybody that had a water tap from March 1st till July the 1st to have that water tap removed at no cost to them. And the reason for that is Bookto had, their water rates structure had a thing where you could have an extra water tap for ten dollars a month. And when we took over the building, our billing was you had to pay minimum, you had to pay a minimum bill on every water tap. So a lot of people got, when we took over Bookto, a lot of people got surprised and had, that some people had two or three extra taps. And the committee discussed, we don't want extra taps because they can be abused. Uh, and so we decided that for one time, the property owner can, by July the 1st, can come in and ask for that, those extra taps to be removed. And the city will remove them at the cost of the city, and that's a one-time deal. And if you want that deal, you gotta get in here and see the auditor's office by July the 1st. And that ordinance is on the day of July.
The fees?
Hmm?
The deposits?
We didn't, that's the same, well, I guess we discussed deposits. Dan wants me to say that Scott researched the deposits. When Bookto left the city of Nelsonville to go to county, all deposits for a water meter were refunded to everybody that had a water meter in Bookto. Uh, when we took it back, the auditor's office was requiring people to pay a fifty-dollar deposit. That money will not go against, will be held in advance. And when you finally give up your water bill, it'll be refunded to you. It's not a charge, it's just a deposit. And the reason for it is when, when the Bookto left Nelsonville, all those deposits were refunded. And we have an ordinance where that requires people to pay a deposit on a water bill. So it's not like they're being charged anything extra. It's a deposit, much like a lot of utilities make a deposit.
We've had a police and fire meeting and basically just discussed the shopping cart ordinance. Crowman joined in. They had no issues, no, none of the other businesses, the effects chimed in. Crowers had four of their people, regional district, local manager. Uh, and they had no problem with the ordinance. So that's on the agenda tonight to be returned.
That's it.
We had a finance committee meeting. Talked about a couple of things, the upcoming street levy. And it is actually on the city website if anyone wants to watch it in its entirety. So you can bring the notes, please.
Anyone else? All right, I think we're up to the fire department update. You with Mr. Barber?
You did.
How about now?
Okay.
All right. So I currently have three grants that are open right now. We have a $2,000 municipal food grant. This is for marks, pagers, and apparatus headsets. I currently have a bureau workers' compensation firefighter cancer awareness grant that's still open for structural firefighting gloves and nomex foods. I have a 2020 fire marks of equipment grant that's open right now for firefighters. And at this time, I'm currently looking for, or looking into grants. And protective gear. Uh, during this time, protocols and policies for the department have changed many times as knowledge and understanding of the virus has evolved. Our EMS responders in the community have been very careful as to not have any confirmed COVID-19 virus. We have taken a handful of calls that resulted in screening and isolation of the patient, but no confirmed case of the virus has directly impacted any of the members of our department. Fire and EMS calls are still, they've been down, they've been down since the start of the Corona, COVID-19 pandemic. Last week, they started to trickle back towards normal numbers. So we're starting to see an incline in the fire and EMS calls again. On the 27th of last month, the fire department was requested for a water rescue. It resulted in the rescue of one suspect that was actually in a police chase and one police officer. And we retrieved three other officers from the swift-moving waters. It should be recognized also that rescues and this, this rescue and these retrievals were actually made possible because of the addition of the new boat motor for the inflatable rescue boat. It was determined that during training previous to this event, that the motor that we actually had was actually inadequate for the swift-moving water. During the training, we found that we were actually underpowered. So this new boat motor took care of that issue for us. Many residents probably noticed the water rescue crew from our department on the river following, the following day and the day after. Doing water training, we took advantage of the swift-moving, fast-moving swollen waters to do more training and more evolution. So many of the members might have seen crews between Glen Emmon Road and New Library. On the 28th, the fire department responded to a fire call that has resulted in attempted arson charges being filed. This case is still open and under investigation. The only thing new coming up would be Saturday, this Saturday, May 16th, we'll be helping the school with a drive-through prom. We're currently working on plans right now to make this a safe event and work on helping school with traffic and parking. This will be a social distancing drive-through event where they will actually stay inside their vehicles. But it'll give them still an opportunity to come to the school with all their different vehicles and then modes of transportation like they've done in the past. That was a big point for the prom, so they wanted to do that again for the kids. Police and Fire Committee will be receiving an email requesting capital improvement money to purchase structural firefighting PPE items. A fire hose tester answered and required water rescue suits. The, if anybody noticed, the suit that I was wearing during the last cold water event was actually a cold water rescue suit. It's a suit that's actually very dangerous in swift-moving water and it's dangerous to try to swim in. The decision was made by myself to wear that suit because of the prolonged time that I anticipated being in the water. So I will get some information and some numbers to the Police and Fire Committee. That way they can push this through to the council. Uh, these items were previously planned before, out of the capital improvement line item. This line item is now gone, so these purchases will have to be requested to the Police and Fire Committee and then go to council. Committee members should receive an email by next week. That's all I have.
Thank you, Gary. All right, we're on to first reading of ordinance 33-20.
Final dis.
Ordinance 33-20, an ordinance admitting the 2020 appropriations ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriated balance the following. The sum of $7,500 from sewer fund number 750 to line item number 750-765-70011, sewer collection improvements. $900 from general fund number 100 to line item number 100-330-10010, salaries and wages. $900 from water fund number 700 to line item number 700-330-10010, salaries and wages. $900 from sewer fund number 750 to line item number 750-330-10010, salaries and wages. $175 from general fund number 100 to line item number 100-330-10020, OPRS. $20 from general fund number 100 to line item number 100-330-10050, Medicare. $175 from water fund number 700 to line item number 700-330-10020, OPRS. $20 from water fund number 700 to line item number 700-330-10050, Medicare. $175 from sewer fund number 750 to line item number 750-330-10020, OPRS. $20 from sewer fund number 750 to line item number 750-330-10050, Medicare. Whereas the appropriations ordinance needs to be amended to appropriate monies for former clerks of council expenses. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. One, the 2020 appropriations are amended to appropriate the following sums from the unappropriated balance to the designated line items.
You don't need, you don't need to read the whole thing.
Thank you. Two, the total appropriations are increased by said amount. Three, this ordinance shall become effective at the earliest date provided by law, duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules on the 11th day of May 2020, Nelsonville City Council.
Council discussion.
Just the ordinance for the back pay of the clerks?
Yes, and the other one is the?
Manholes.
Manholes, yeah.
Anyone else?
Yeah, we need to amend to have a resolution or a motion or something for that, for it to have in writing.
It's in writing, it's on the?
It's for you.
Well, I, I guess I'll just.
Has entered the conference.
You think that's good enough?
Yeah, I mean, it's in writing, there, for back clerk.
Hello?
We had a caller just pop in, last 3714, I'm not sure who it is though.
Okay.
That's me.
Need to identify themselves.
Identify yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Lois McDonald, 1024.
Okay, go ahead, Ms.
My question is, I've lived on my property for 71 years. I'm wondering if there's any money left over from the neighborhood grant? Because our end of the street always seems to miss. I desperately need curbs in front of my house. We get the drain off, run, uh, water from the mines. It's muddy and slippery all the time.
Okay, well, that is, that is something that we need to bring up at the street committee meeting.
Okay.
Okay, Lois, well, there should be, we'll have one scheduled here sometime soon and?
Lois, this is Linda Watkins, I'm head of the street committee, I'll make sure to schedule a meeting.
Okay, let me know.
Okay, I will.
All right, thank you, Lois.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay. Motion to suspend.
Okay, thank you very much, guys.
Hey Gary, can I ask, is this sufficient authorization to write? To write the back checks, or do I need a specific authorization to, to do a one-time payout like this?
No, this is sufficient, there's, it's in the law as Taylor, that this is for clerk expenses, final former clerk expenses, so long as it's appropriated, that's sufficient, all you need.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to suspend.
Second. Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? Mr. Smith?
Because of the controversy, I am going to abstain.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Some, some.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Abstain.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ordinance 34-20. Someone introduce that.
Oh, introduce that.
Ordinance 34-20, an ordinance providing a one-time removal at no cost of water taps within the Village of Bookto, Ohio, formerly on the Athens County Water System, now part of the Nelsonville, Ohio Water System and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville, Ohio acquired the Athens County Water System serving the Village of Bookto, Ohio on March 1, 2020. Whereas customers on the system experience different billing systems and rules which cause unused water taps to be billed at different rates. Whereas the city of Nelsonville wishes to assist in the removal of all unused water taps at no cost to the residents of the Village of Bookto, Ohio. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, that section one, any Village of Bookto, Ohio property owner previously served by the Athens County Water System, now served by the Nelsonville, Ohio Water System, who requested or requests the removal of an unused water tap between March 1, 2020 and July 1, 2020, shall receive the removal without charge. Section two, any Village of Bookto, Ohio property owner that has paid for the removal of an unused water tap between March 1, 2020 and July 1, 2020, shall receive a credit to the property's water account. Section three, this ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section 731.30, because the accounting and adjustments of water bills needs to be accomplished within a short period of time, and the ordinance shall be on full force and effect upon its adoption. Duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules on the, on May 11, 2020, Nelsonville City Council.
Council discussion.
Yeah, I have a question. I thought we were also offering this one-time thing to the citizens of Nelsonville as well.
Uh, I changed that, it was not my understanding until I changed it to just Bookto because, uh, if you remember, there was some discussion about we would try to see if the, the monies we had for the acquiring the Bookto water system would allow us to reimburse Nelsonville for the removal. In my opinion, if you take that and grant it to all of Nelsonville, that will not be available.
Okay.
To us, so I limited it to just the Bookto as a result of something. In my opinion, was left out of the agreement because we were not aware of the situation.
Well, if we have anybody from Nelsonville that we can come back later.
Make way to them.
So, okay. Taylor, if you have anybody from Nelsonville that had affected, let us know. Utility committee will take it up.
Yeah, if I could, real quickly, I haven't heard anything about Nelsonville, but I just wanted to make sure, so with this ordinance, my office is going to reach out to them, ask them to request to get these taken out. And then in the meantime, charges will not be incurred, but we will not be refunding past charges, is that my understanding?
No, you'll be refunding. Anything, anything between March 1 and July 1, you would refund if they paid for it.
Okay, got it. I just, and in the committee, we had said no refunds and I wasn't sure if I was reading this wrong or, or what, but I'm refund, so I'm not arguing.
In the, in the committee, Taylor, we, we agreed to refund anybody that already paid. Not actually refund, give them the bill credit.
Okay, that's, I mean, yeah, that wasn't my recollection, but I was for it anyway.
I'm probably getting a request in writing too, Taylor.
Say that again for me?
I, I'm probably getting a request in writing.
Get the request in writing to remove the water taps.
Well, we should know because we build them for it.
If they choose not to have that tap removed.
Oh, but you're not allowed to remove yet.
Uh, my current plan is that we're going to mail all these folks and they're gonna, there's gonna be a form that they have to return to us. Um, and if it's a tenant, they probably will have to get the property owner's signature, so.
Good idea.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Prohibits of standing rules.
Second.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
BF.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
I do want to make sure council is aware, there's no guarantee we can apply, reimburse on the money to be due for the purchase, but just make it out.
Please take it out of all directions.
Yeah.
All right, ordinance 35-20, need someone to introduce?
Ordinance 35-20, an ordinance adopting regulations for the installation and/or repair or the cutting and patching of roadways for the use of utilities in the city right away and declaring an emergency. Whereas the Nelsonville, whereas the city of Nelsonville needs to adopt regulations to minimize damages from the installation and/or repair for the cutting and patching of roadways for the use of utilities in the city right away. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that one, that the city of Nelsonville adopts the following regulations for the installation and/or repair or the cutting and patching of roadways for the use of utilities in the city right away. Granular backfill required and all utility lines shall be placed back with the controlled-density fill material no less than six inches. Asphalt is required to be no less than six inches. The city manager, in his/her discretion, shall have the right to have not less than three testing cylinders to ensure proper strength of CDF materials. Any variation from this ordinance requires city manager approval. Two, this ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to ORC 731.30, because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary. So utility work currently in progress can be subject to these regulations, and this ordinance shall be on full force and effect upon its adoption. Duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules on the 11th day of May 2020, Nelsonville City Council.
Council discussion.
Does everybody understand what CDF filth is?
Um, I want you to elaborate on that, please.
So CDF filth is a very compactable density filth. It's like a concrete slurry. It'll get hard, but you can still dig through it. There's two types, there's a CDF 50 and a CDF 100. CDF 50, you can dig through with a shovel, very difficult. Uh, CF 100, you will have to use a machine to get through it. It's just compaction, so.
We don't have sinkholes?
Yeah, exactly. It helps with the settling. And, and the six-inch minimum requirement and six inches on the asphalt. So, we'll end up with these
Big dips of the road.
Big dips in the utilities.
This is when we're, we're backfilling.
Yeah, so you'll, you'll dig your holes, you'll put your pipe down, you put your stone down, and then you put CDF fill in over that, and then asphalt.
That'll alleviate the dipping.
Right, so.
And all the bumps in the roads.
And then, you know, so.
As I said, when we have patch, it does end up dipping over time.
Yeah, settles. This long. So, and then the city manager has the right to ask for testing cylinders. And what they'll do is they'll pour three cylinders about that tall. So, you'll have a thirty-day break, a sixty-day break, and a ninety-day break. And each of those breaks, it cures after time. Thirty-day break will come up to a certain compaction, sixty, so forth. And it's just a, a way to call it control.
It's also a way to protect our infrastructure from sinking anymore.
It also protects the lines because a lot of times, unless, unless it has time to settle, when that sinks, it can take the line out when it goes down too.
Yeah, it sure will.
It, it sometimes tears the line off. But basically what it does, it makes it so it's a proper repair once the street's been dug.
Does this, does this change the contract that's already in place with the sewer company, with people putting in the sewer lines?
Yes, a little bit.
Does it raise their prices?
It does raise your price.
So, I've already been in contact, if I may interject, with, uh, all of the contractors and Stan Tech, the engineer, for that. So, they're tracking all of these changes, and for now, it looks to be the contingency will be able to cover the increase for them. And more specifically, the repairs, all the, or not repairs, all the addition of the new gas line that Columbia Gas is doing. Uh, we've already been in touch with them, and as soon as this, uh, if this gets passed, all we have to do is let them know and they will immediately switch procedures.
Very good.
Any other discussion needed?
Uh, I have one discussion on it.
Go ahead.
Uh, if we pass this, the way it is, it's not going to go into effect till June twenty-sixth, and we got a bunch of, uh, we have a bunch of construction work taking off.
It's got an emergency clause on it.
Oh, it's emergency clause?
Yeah.
Okay, so I suggest we suspend the rules and get it in effect, so. I'm sorry, I have my glasses with me, but, but, uh, I suggest we suspend the rules and get it into effect because we have gas lines being repaired or whatever, and it needs done, so I'll make a motion to suspend the rule.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkey?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
Second. Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkey?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-six dash twenty, need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce it.
Ordinance number thirty-six dash twenty. An ordinance amending the Nelsonville Codified Ordinances, Chapter nine, to add shopping cart regulations. Whereas the Nelsonville Codified Ordinances needs to be amended to add shopping cart regulations. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio, that one, that the Nelsonville Code of Ordinances, Chapter nine, shall be amended to add shopping cart regulations, the text of which is in Exhibit A, attached Tier two and incorporated herein by reference. Two, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading on the twenty-sixth day of May, two thousand and twenty, Nelsonville City Council.
All right. Resolution twenty-two thirty-two.
Yeah, Mr. President, this is a two-reading resolution. I, I put it for two readings, but I'm probably not going to be in, here in person for the second reading, and I'd like to shepherd this over to the Board of Elections. So, I would request to go ahead and suspend the rules tonight because there's documents here that the council has to sign.
And there is a correction. I thought it's supposed to be replacement, not renewal?
Right.
Didn't I say replacement?
No, you cut off the renewal.
Says replacement on the bottom, but renewal at the top.
My mistake.
I'll introduce it.
Do we need to amend that?
No, it hasn't been read yet. The body says replacement.
Resolution twenty-two thirty-two. A resolution placing the five-year replacement of a three-mil street levy on the ballot at the general election to be held on November third, two thousand and twenty. Whereas the three-mil street levy is due to expire in two thousand and twenty, and whereas the taxes that will be raised within the ten-mil limitation will be insufficient to provide for the necessary requirements of Nelsonville City, and therefore it is necessary to levy a tax in excess of that limitation for general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges, and street and road maintenance pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section fifty-seven oh-five-point-nineteen G. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. One, the taxes that will be raised within the ten-mil limitation will be insufficient to provide for the necessary requirements of Nelsonville City, and therefore it is necessary to levy a tax in excess of that limitation for general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges, and street and road maintenance pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section fifty-seven oh-five-point-nineteen G. Two, the resolution attached Tier two and incorporated herein by reference placing the issue of the replacement of the three-mil street levy on the November third, two thousand and twenty, general election ballot is adopted. Three, the clerk is directed to deliver a certified copy of this resolution and attachment to the Athens County Board of Elections prior to ninety days before November third, two thousand and twenty. Four, this resolution shall be on full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law, duly enacted by council upon
First reading.
First reading.
Under suspension of the rule.
Under suspension of the rules on this eleventh day of May, two thousand and twenty.
Council discussion?
What was the difference between replacement and renewal? And I hate to take the chance. People will vote for renewal and they won't vote for replacement.
I looked, uh, two thousand and fifteen, it was done for replacement, Greg.
I know.
People passed it.
Yeah.
Let's give it a shot. I think if we, if we behind us enough and show people what we're using it for.
If we could get some numbers. I mean, I'm sure it's not very many per house.
Yeah, we'll get some, you know, so that people know where the money's going.
Get it out to the public and not just have it.
Just not have it show up on the ballot and be like, here we go, people. So, I agree, I agree. All right. Uh, any more council discussion? Okay. Uh, motion to suspend? So, move.
Second. Mr. Dunkey?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkey?
Yes.
Before they leave tonight, you actually have to sign the answer.
Absolutely. All right. All right, we are to the city manager's report. Your own, Scott.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, first thing I got for you is we hired our new supervisor for the utilities department, uh, Mr. Jason Cohen. He's also the one that came up with the idea for CDF, which is going to save the city a lot of money in the long run. And really excited about that. He's also, he's also the one that, uh, is keeping us straight on the potential fracouts when we pour underneath the river. So, that's just some geeky behind-the-scenes stuff that really just protect the city. So, very happy to have him on board, uh, just for, you know, perfect, uh, transparency. We did a whole panel, so Chief Barber, Chief Johnson, uh, Mr. Smith from Sewer, and, uh, Taylor, they were all there, myself, when we did a hiring panel. So, it was all five of us, just, uh, put that out there for everybody. And so far, he's been off to the races and running. With that said, uh, my first update is on the sidewalk, uh, installation. I believe we're coming to an end on that. The last bit of the sidewalks was installed over on Second Street, where previously caved in by the senior home there. Additionally, down at Poly, which is a part of the same grant, the, uh, the concrete posts have been poured for the light poles, which will be coming soon. Currently, they've been ordered, and we're just waiting on them to arrive, and then, uh, get all that going down there at Poly. The sewer project is still moving along. Uh, it's a mess down there on that end of town, if you haven't seen it. And it's probably going to get worse before it gets better, just with the amount of construction happening and going on down there. On a good note, uh, we are one of the companies as a, one of the companies, we're able to hire them, since they already have their equipment in town, to shave down the speed bump down there that everybody loves so much. So, that'll be gone soon too, when the road opens back up. The natural gas projects moving along. If it, folks have seen the asphalt on Fort Street and other places, that is not the permanent fix, that's just temporary. So, that will be cleaned out and done correctly. The street department is working on potholes, or meaning they're preparing to do potholes. So, they've been sweeping a lot, especially on the Canal Street side to get Canal Street cleaned up. They've also been straightening some signs as we go down through there, uh, different road signs are crooked. In addition to that, the code has renewed, she started sending out all the letters the second time around. So, background is, we sent a whole bunch of letters before COVID kicked off, uh, for all the bad signs out there. And either have them repaired, taken down, one of the two. And that kind of all fell to the wayside during the pandemic. But now that, uh, you know, the state's starting to open things back up, uh, she sent reminder letters out to them, and we're getting after that pretty strong. The, in addition to code, everybody out there, please make sure your grass is cut. She, we, we are looking. Uh, myself and Code, we've been out and about looking for high grass and all the other stuff that goes along with it, rubbish in the yard, and you name it. So, we are out and about and starting to issue that stuff out. Also, I wanted to let you folks know that the planning commission met the other night to swear, so they were sworn in. Now they can be the zoning, uh, the zoning board as well, until we can get enough folks up on the zoning, uh, board to press forward with that. Not sure if, uh, you folks have had a chance to look around the compound, but it is way cleaner than it has been in a long time. The Conexes are here, uh, they've got, they're starting to fill it up. The only thing that's out in the yard now is, uh, on our pipeline, who's temporarily storing their stuff here at night. Everything else is tucked in nice and tight, which is really good and very happy about that. Also, just wanted to give a quick update on the pool. So, the, I believe if the weather cooperates, they're going to try and get the dirt, rest of the dirt out this week, and that way we can get the concrete folks in there. I know the state has got us shut down to the end of May for now, but I still want to press forward in case they decide to open it up. And if they open it up, I just want to make sure everything's ready to go and in place. It's my understanding we need to fill it, um, for a week prior to opening. So, June first comes and they allow us to open it up, then hopefully by the second week of June, we're up in running. If not, then no harm, no foul. I just want to make sure everything's prepped for it in the event we can open. Also, fireworks. So, it's my understanding, everybody up, or not everybody, but a lot of folks up north have canceled their fireworks. I have not canceled our fireworks. I, if we are directed to not do that, of course, we can adjust on the fly for that, but right now that's on. Chief Barber's been sending out letters to orchestrate everything on that side. Uh, there's even been some stuff floating around to possibly do a cruise-in if folks are interested. So, on the fourth of July, to, could potentially turn into a big thing for Nelsonville and draw some big crowds from up north down to our little town, if we're able to go through with it. Um, and then the last one was, so, we ran into a snafu last week, at the end of the week, for a contract that we didn't know about for the police department body cams. So, uh, we got hit with a seven-thousand-dollar bill that's going to be reoccurring for the next four years. And I'm sure that's got to go to another committee somewhere, but it's a problem, and I just wanted to illuminate it as quick as possible. Uh, maybe Taylor can speak more to it on the, uh, financial side, but I did want to bring it up as it's a potential problem.
Is that a usage fee or is that a storage fee?
Usage.
Is it usage? It's both, I think.
Wasn't this in the ordinance?
This was.
I'm surprised. Being able to talk about that, that was what I brought up.
Yeah.
I thought we passed it.
That there was going to be a graduating.
Yeah, but it wasn't seven thousand.
There was no seven thousand. Not per year, but may have been for the life, for the, what was it, five years?
But we need to, we need to call a committee meeting and bring this.
So, that went through a time lapse.
Yes.
Okay, so.
We'll have to make sure Chris Thomas was always capable.
Are we, are we required, are we committed to this, though?
Yes, if I could, if I could jump in, this, uh, issue, the reason why it's, it's kind of multiple issues at the same time is one, yes, it's a storage and a usage fee, but it is kind of hefty. It's over seven thousand dollars. There's nowhere budgeted for it. But it's the same, it's the same, there's, as far as money goes, it's the same problem we're going to have when we talk about, like, I know, like, the fire equipment was mentioned earlier. The capital improvement fund is a fund that's just like, just going to be broke in twelve months. Um, so we don't know where to take the money, A, but two, it's a contract. So, this, these cameras were signed for, for twelve thousand dollars in two thousand, um, nineteen. And I went back to the ordinance and the minutes for the finance committee and the general council meeting, and all it does is appropriate the twelve thousand dollars for that first purchase. But now we have actually, it's a five-year contract that totals over forty-two thousand dollars. Um, so, I'm not even, I'm not even sure they were authorized to sign it. I don't know how this came about.
Taylor, who signed it?
Contract is, I've got it sitting.
My predecessor.
His predecessor.
Can you bring that contract to the next finance meeting, please, Taylor? Thank you.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, that's a problem.
So, Scott, I have one more question for you. The light poles down at Poly Field, you said the light poles are coming soon. I know I talked to a board unit, Stan Tech, a while back about the wiring situation down there. Has, has anybody looked into that? Because I had Stan Tech down there, because the wiring at the old pool house was delicious.
It's dangerous.
Yeah, it needs, it needs to be a new service put in there. Stan Tech was supposed to be looking into that.
All confirmed. For some reason, I was under the impression that's already happening, but I'm meeting with them tomorrow, and I can definitely answer that question.
And then that could be, because I took Michael Best over there, and I showed him, we've got like a whole two-pole system. And, you know, they didn't even want to fire up the outlets and whatnot in the new bathrooms over there.
Yeah, it's vintage.
So, uh, every joint there, they just need to bring in a new service.
Yeah, the new meter base and new, new meter, uh, fuse box, correct?
So, but if Michael Best is already working on that, then, you know, I just want to clarify that. Because you're not going to be able to hook up that, those lights to the old system.
Definitely. I'll, I'll double-check tomorrow when I talk to him. And just on a random side note too, so our neighbors next door, the VFW, uh, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar, but the flag down there doesn't have the proper illumination at night. So, they bought a, uh, solar one to put on there that's not made for it, and it, it really doesn't work all that great. So, as part of the install, uh, the VFW has agreed to pay the electrician extra to install a spotlight on that, one of the LED spotlights, to make sure the flag's properly illuminated.
Yeah, that's nice, dude.
Anything else, Scott?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, let's go to the good of the order, Mr. Taylor.
Uh, I'll say happy belated Mother's Day to all the mothers, and hopefully they had a wonderful Sunday. And, uh, I know that we tried to, my boys tried to spoil my wife, so that was nice. It was a good day, so hopefully everybody else did as well. I'd just like to say.
I'd just like to say, um, if you all are elderly or are unable to cut your yard and you are worried about a code enforcement violation, please contact Scott, our city manager, and I would be willing to cut your yard for you at no cost. Um, I do this every year. Last year, nobody even.
I'm one of those elders.
Yeah, I get you. And also to wish Mr. Greg Smith a happy birthday.
Oh, yeah.
I got too short to the end of it, maybe today. So, making America great since 1954.
All right, Ms. Ms. Grant?
Um, I really don't have anything. Neighborhood watch. Maybe we'll get back to it in June. If so, it'll be the first Wednesday at 6 o'clock.
Keep a watch out, still, right? Keep a watch out.
Yeah, keep a watch out, please.
I don't have anything except for we're reading on Tuesday next time, the day after.
Sure, I wish to have a motion to do that.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, that's a holiday that we're meeting on Tuesday.
So are you, are you making the.
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, I mean.
To move the.
I just.
Motion to move the meeting?
To the 26th. To Tuesday, the 26th?
To Tuesday, the 26th, yeah.
Yeah, we can do one next Monday.
You just wanna do one next Friday, 18? Just move it.
That way you know you're Memorial Day weekend in case people leave town.
Yeah, in case somebody's gone.
Oh, so just do it on 18th, not.
Yeah, just move it to the 18th.
That's true.
Next Monday.
Yeah, I'm outnumbered. I don't like that, but I'm outnumbered. I don't like being so close and then we're, so we're so long before the next.
I see your point there.
That's true.
Let's, let's just leave it, let's just go Tuesday.
Yeah.
Does everybody have a idea?
Motion to move.
Yeah, straight commit.
Yeah.
Motion to move next week's meeting, or no, the 25th meeting to the 26th, which is Tuesday.
One more motion.
Second.
Sorry, it just feels like, you know, at the start of the COVID, it felt like we, you know.
Right.
We're not getting in there for three weeks.
And it gives us an opportunity to have a couple of committee meetings, too.
Yeah, we usually have the committee meetings on the off Monday.
True.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkey?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
All right. Good of the order, Mr. Smith.
I just wanted to thank everybody for all the birthday wishes today. When you get to my age, you're just glad to have another birthday.
Oh, come on.
Mr. Sherman?
I'm good.
You want to soak brand?
Well, you know, we need to make sure we keep our hands clean.
Yes, absolutely. All right, um, I have a motion to go into the executive session to discuss personnel. I'd like to. Yeah, city finances. I would like to speak to, uh.
I don't know city finances, appropriate topic.
Okay.
Yeah, but as it pertains to personnel or something.
Personnel. Okay, and I would like to invite Mr. Taylor. Or not Mr. Taylor. Mr. Hunter.
Did you wanna come with us?
I'd like to come in, so I'd like to. Well, if you would have the feed, we're just going to stay.
Yeah, for everyone out there, just so you know, um, we're about to shut down the council chambers and you'll be completely off. And, uh, for everybody out there in Facebook land, we're gonna stay live, uh, just standing by until they're finished and then I'll come back on.
They don't allow enough lines for councils.
Second.
That motion is pretty.
Facebook land, it looks like everybody's coming back. Okay, I can see you guys. Can you hear me?
Yeah. No, that's gonna retire for the executive session.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkey?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Push it to a down.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes, to get out of.
That was like the easiest.